All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the April fifteenth City Council Workshop. And this is a budget workshop, and it's going to be on general discussion by the council. With that, this session will be conducted remotely, and council members will only participate electronically. For those of you in online, please ensure that you join this meeting using the following website address. If by chance you join by any other link, we ask that you re-log in using that website address. And we will allow some public comment once we've had our general discussions. And also, public comments can be sent to publiccomment@louisstonmaine.gov prior to or during the meeting, and all comments received will be forwarded to the city council. And with that said, we'll get into the workshop. And I don't mean to be a pain, but I'm going to bring this up again. After watching, you know, our discussions as we went line by line on items, I just, you know, we have three people attending this meeting who truly understand running city government. And although we dictate policy and budgeting, I would encourage the city council just to consider again coming up with a, an amount that we can live with for, for the property taxpayers. And then we let our city administrator look at his budget and try to determine the best way to use that available funding. And I'll just, I'll bring up a couple of examples. The very last on the priority list was the recreation specialist. And I, and I recognize, and it's important to me, that we build our recreation program back up again. But we're not there yet. We need, you know, we're just hiring a new superintendent. And we haven't even developed the program yet. So that might be a position. And I think that's probably why it was listed last on the list. I could wait for next year. But then, so we added that, but then we also took away the senior principal clerk from the finance department, and that is a position that's desperately needed right now. And I, you know, and I think it was all with great intentions from the council. So I'm going to, I'm going to throw that suggestion out for consideration. And then, you know, we have to identify totality, what we'd be willing to pass on to the taxpayers. I'm going to throw two numbers out to the council, and then I'll shut up and let the council do its job and decide. But I'm, you know, I'm thinking something that might be tolerable to the taxpayers as a dollar increase. And if we sent our city administrator a forty cent increase and asked him to work with that and see what he could come up with, and then we, you know, potentially gave sixty cents to the school, a dollar is still a very significant tax increase and will still put us very close to thirty dollars in the end, which is never a good thing. But so anyway, I, you know, I understand this is the council decision, and I just want to throw that out there. Counselor Ray, I think you had your hand raised first.
Thank you, Mayor. I had some questions that came up as you were talking. And so I wanted to ask Director Hunter and Administrator, don't, if there was one year where we put some things in the budget, but only for half the year? Is that, can you remind me what that was? And, and how did, how do we think that worked out from the staff side of things?
It was two years ago, and we phased them in depending on the list of the priorities. So if we knew some positions by the time we posted them and so forth, took a little bit of lead time, we could stagger those starts, I think, because one example was the fire inspector and the city clerk's position, because you were looking at, and this was prior positions, that's not this budget. Because we were starting the rental registration process and to gear that up. And I think it was also gearing up for the election and so forth. The concerns raised is obviously you're prorating the salary and you're reaping the benefit in the current year budget, but you're setting yourself up for the FY23 budget. Because at that point, you need to budget for the entire salary and fringe benefit package. So I mean, yes, it provides some moderate relief in the current year budget, knowing that you're going to get it the following year. The, I guess, pro or con, just kind of contemplating it, is the, we would be in a better position to know where our parking revenue is going to fall out. That is a hole right now. And especially, we've got the double whammy. You've got COVID, plus you've got the gate equipment that is not functional right now. So it gives us that whole year, six months to a year, to implement what we need to get the, the software and the gates back functionally. And by that point, one would think hopefully that enough people would be returning to work that we would at least have some normalcy in their parking revenue. So that may offset taking some of those salaries to a full impact on the budget in 2020.
That's helpful. And I guess the, the more pointed question is like, and to the mayor's point, I think the recreation specialist might be a good idea to hold off on. But as I think it was Council Clement said on Tuesday night, we did make that promise that even though we were freezing it last year, it would return to this budget. And so I'm just trying to think how we fulfill both sides of things, I guess.
Counselor Ray, can I make a small distinction there? Because I think that may be confusing. The, the promise was made for the rec programmer position.
Okay.
Currently in the budget as it stands now. Tuesday night, the council not only said yes to that, but added a full-time position and added another part-time position that were part of the Newport Program and Services. So that would increase the budget by that position in the half, in addition to restoring that frozen position.
Okay, so, sorry, just trying to track everything. So the programmer is in the base budget. We did not know. Yes, it now is because we voted to do that on Tuesday night.
Not only that, but all frozen positions were incorporated in the base budget.
Okay, I see that.
Tuesday night is some of, if you look back on that original spreadsheet, anything in, with the exception of the crisis workers, anything in that column that says yes in the base budget, those were frozen positions in the current year that we added to the base budget. So those positions will not increase the budget at this juncture. If the council elects to refreeze them, if you will, then it would reduce the budget.
Did we refreeze any of these? I feel like maybe one of the drill officer.
Yes, well, you didn't necessarily freeze them. You cut them.
Okay.
So based upon the ones you cut were the finance senior principal clerk, an equipment operator, a police officer, an equipment mechanic, another police officer, the engineering tech, and then a second mechanic. Those are all ones that you stripped out from the budget. And in lieu of that, you added the DEI specialist, the case, two crisis workers, this recreation specialist versus the programmer. And the part-time community coordinator. Those are ones that you added into the budget that were not there.
Okay. That's helpful. To the mayor's point about throwing up a number, the sixty cents on the school side is going to lead to cuts. Basically, how it's presented to us was, I think the lowest we could go was seventy-eight cents with everything that was voted through. So we're going to have to, I wish, I'm not saying that we're opposed to redoing the process, but I think we're going to have to go back and relitigate some other things that we already talked about in order to get to that. So I know the 101 was presented. I'm not sure how adult ed figures into that. But we'll have to go back and do more work, I think, is, is the understanding. And I can, of course, carry that forward from tonight to the committee when we don't meet. Is the only thing, because next week is April vacation. I don't have a calendar open, but we don't meet until right after that. So whatever we do talk about tonight, and if there seems to be a general consensus, I will pass it along, of course. But I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the school increase as it is, and I would be okay with continuing down the road as we are. But I understand other folks might not want to do that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Ray, Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Picking up on a conversation you and I had earlier in the week, a couple of things. I would be in favor of revisiting the finance position. That was just, I don't know that there was anybody in favor of that. So I guess we'd be, if, if we were in an actual meeting and we were following Robert's rules, then we'd be on the prevailing side for any one of us to reconsider that, if this were a motion to reconsider. But since we're just bandering things about, perhaps we can do this informally. I did today inquire of the deputy administrator, if we had a job position, excuse me, a job description for the straw vote approval of the equity and diversity specialist. And I was told we do not. I cannot see us going forward on a position. We don't even know what that person's going to do yet. And ninety thousand dollars, I know the majority wanted to talk about that. I know there's going to be some pushback from the public on that. I've been told that. So without a job description, I mean, you and I talked about that. Your idea, my idea were opposed, and now come to find out, there is no idea. So without a job description, I think, you know, how can you say, we have a concept, we don't even know what we're voting for in that regard? With your idea of a dollar, the finance committee has given me as their chair, their input for the recommendation. I'm in the process of formulating that recommendation now. And literally half of the finance committee thinks that this budget is way out of whack. I think if I go back to them, I'm going to go back and ask them about the dollar thing. I'll ask them individually. But that may be too much. I hear what Counselor Ray has to say, but I also hear what people are telling me. And one member of the finance committee came at me and said, this is a constituent view only. He says, I'm not speaking as a member of the finance committee, but, and he outlined several different things. And I had to, had to agree with his philosophy on it. We are not at a place yet, we're uncomfortable, we're getting so close to thirty dollars. I mean, that is going to be in seventy-two font, the type on the top of the page of every newspaper and every real estate sheet in the state of Maine. People who are moving out of Portland and thinking of moving north, oh, that's the next place we're going to go is Lewiston. Hell, no. They're going to skip us over, and they're going to go to Waterville or Sydney or Augusta or maybe even further north than that. They aren't going to stop here. And once they jump over us, that's it. Just like a game of checkers, once you've jumped over, you're done. So I, I think we have to be very, very careful in that regard. So with that being said, my suggestion would be the, the final position on the recreation specialist. Let's look at doing that maybe halfway through the year. Let's get the half a year up on recreation. We did commit to folks last year that we were going to do something over recreation. Maybe we've taken that a step too far. But the other thing is, I think, to me, right now, a finance clerk is much more important where we stand today and what we need to accomplish than a position at ninety thousand plus training dollars for which we don't even have a job description. I mean, I've had at least three people tell me in the last two or three months that you people are creating a solution for a problem that does not exist. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Patton Gill.
Thank you. So I, I just wanted to throw my support behind the forty cents. I think it's a good idea. You know, I just wanted to, you know, say I appreciate the mayor doing his job and leading the, the city and setting the tone and direction. I'm perfectly okay, as Counselor Clement said, with revisiting the finance clerk. You know, forty cents on the city, sixty cents on the school. It's a lot, but it gives us a place to start. So I, I see, say we try it, see, see where it goes from there and talk about it.
Okay, thank you. Any other councils would like to weigh in? Counselor LaJoie? I think you muted the mic.
I learned to press the right button. You know, reviewing everything that we went through the last meeting and the, the cuts that we undertook, as well as the positions that, that we added. The, and, and I hope nobody takes this personally, because that's not the way it's meant to be. The individual that is going to be part of the HR, I do agree that it's quite a cost at ninety thousand plus benefits, and I'm not sure what that equals to. And, and I, as I voted against it, you know, I don't think it's necessary. I think our personnel and, and the human resource department are doing a very good job. I think that there was training out there for a number of years, even before I left in the diversity aspect, especially addressing our new maintenance and stuff like that. So I, we started this early. And, and I guess the reason I voted against it is because I didn't understand why it was needed, a particular area as such. With that said, and I'll bring this up, I was thinking that possibly we have a diversity statement for Lewiston. I understand that there's one for Auburn that's exactly the same. I know there was some discussions and some items brought up, such as that diversity position with the HR department, and I don't know if that's going to be something that's going to be happening with the city of Auburn. However, I was thinking to reduce the budget, if that is the case, and we want someone specifically for that. I was wondering if maybe the city administrator could approach the city of Auburn and see if they could do a cost sharing of that position. So that position would not only represent Lewiston, but it would also represent and do work for Auburn. We are LA, we're supposed to be together, we're supposed to be working together. In that sense, I think it would reduce the cost. It would not only help Auburn, it would help Lewiston as well. Possibly another avenue to go by would be for the two cities to look at this position to be a contract position instead of a employee position. Therefore, you wouldn't have the secondary expense of benefits. So those are my thoughts on that. And lastly, I, I have to agree with you, and, and I, I'm not sure how I voted that night. However, I do, I do believe the finance clerk position is a very important position. And, and, you know, we probably should review that and put that back in there. We did add positions. We took out positions that had been there before. We've created new positions to offset that or to get the money for the new positions. I find that kind of awkward, specifically because a couple of years ago, we froze positions, needed positions that, that helped the government run more efficiently. And here we are, we're adding new positions and letting those other ones go by the wayside. So I, I don't understand the thinking behind that, and I guess that's what bothers me somewhere. As far as the suggestion that you had, Mr. Mayor, and having the city administrator giving them a, set them out and having them look at the, the budget again and come back with a recommendation, I agree with you. I, I think that's, that's good policy, and I think it's warranted. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor Ray.
Thank you. I'm just doing some math over here, so sorry if I was a bit distracted. But I appreciate the comments that were just made. So Director Hunter, again, very quick math. From what I had written down, we took out four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars worth of salary from this list. Is that right?
Hang on just a second. I can be more specific.
Okay.
So to kind of go through based upon what had happened, we are adding back the DEI specialists. You cut the senior principal clerk, you cut a highway equipment operator, you cut two patrol officers, two equipment mechanics, an engineering tech. You added a second recreation specialist. The programmer that was frozen is still in there, and then you added another one. And then you added a part-time community coordinator position in the rec department.
And how, what was the rate of the part-time person? I don't have that on here.
That one, it was on the no program and service list. That one had a value of just under eighteen thousand dollars.
Okay, so I, as I was doing that, it looks like we removed two hundred and fourteen thousand net.
Net, I can tell you right now. The net reduction was a hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars.
Vaguely close. Okay, so what's that? Not quite ten cents. So it's a somewhat closer than we were, right? So there was a decrease from that?
I would offer that several of the positions that are on there, and council sets policy. And I'm not speaking just for my finance position here, because I know there is a very valuable position or two positions at PW, one being the equipment operator and one being the equipment mechanics that will impact your winter operations. Those were in the budget that are now being removed from the budget.
Okay.
And that's, that's what's helping, obviously, make up for the, the add-back positions.
Okay, so I think the two things, or the couple of things I would suggest moving forward would be that we do the half year for recreation specialists, given that we have a new rec superintendent and moving forward. I would, I think Counselor LaJoie's idea about moving the DEI specialist to a shared position would be fascinating. We talked about that in the Western Maine superintendent's agreement years ago, I guess now. And then Lewiston just invested themselves, so we dropped that idea. But it was well-received from the Auburn superintendent at the time. And so I imagine the cities might want to coordinate on that. Um, I think with the ambition that that grows over time, I think the other option there might be to start that position a little bit later. I hear Counselor Clement's question that we don't have a, a document yet to support it. But I think a compromise might be delaying that start till later. I, I voted for the senior principal clerk. I think that's really important. Especially given things I've heard from constituents and friends trying to get through to people in the offices. They're just so busy with all of the work that they need to do. So I'd love to add help to that. And then I don't, I don't know which municipal garage position I would put back in first, but probably one of them.
So Counselor Ray, when you talked about phasing in or doing a delayed start on the rec specialist, that's the one that you are adding to the budget, right? Not the one that's frozen and already in the budget?
Right, that's the twenty-two.
All right.
Okay. Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Listening to comments now, I would offer a suggestion, just something to chew on for a minute. If we're going to approach the city of Auburn to go into a contracted position, and I think Counselor LaJoie had a real brainstorm there, contracted to away with the fringe. I'm not sure what the fringe on a position like that would be directed, but it's got to be what, twenty-seven percent or better?
Just to clarify, when you're looking at all of these amounts on the spreadsheet, those all include fringe and anything required from a union contract standpoint. So they are a hundred percent complete.
All right, thank you. Then if we're going to approach the city of Auburn to do a contracted position where we wouldn't have to necessarily come up with fringe, we wouldn't have to do the state retirement and all these various things. Let's look at putting that out half a year, because we're not going to accomplish that in two or three months' time. As I said, we don't even have a job description yet. We have a concept. And that concept is going to rile a lot of people. Put it out there for a half a year, come up with a job description, work with the city of Auburn. And I would be in favor of saying, if they want to do it, then fine, we can work with them. If they don't want to do it, then I don't see us doing it this year at all. We have far too many other priorities. The equipment operator, the equipment mechanic. I don't know how, how much more we can impact winter operations. We had a pretty mild winter this year. We're due for a good old-fashioned Maine winter any year now. And when that happens, you're going to have equipment go out, it's going to break down. There's not going to be anybody to fix it. You're not going to have anybody to operate it anyway, so maybe it won't break down. I don't, I don't know. It just, to me, it's insanity to go ahead with some of these things that we're discussing, that we have just a concept when we have actual needs. People are looking at us for fiscal responsibility, and I don't see it in some of these things. I thank you.
Thank you, Counselor LaJoie.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Clement's brought up something with regards to Public Works, and I guess this would be a question for Dale. Dale, have we hired any people at Public Works in the last, what was the last time we hired someone? Labor, we'll say.
I can't tell you the exact date, but it's not been that long ago. We are still attracting employees.
Yeah, how many have we employed, have we brought on?
Yeah, I don't have that exact number tonight. I can get it for you. But there've been, there've been a few this spring that we've been successful in. We've gotten some fairly good ones. We've had a few issues so that we tried some people out. They didn't work out. But we have hired several this spring.
In, in the policy for people to apply, does it have a clause in there for CDL, having a CDL license?
When we hire somebody that requires a CDL, we give them six months for that probation. Very similar, although shorter time, but similar to the police department, where we bring them in, we train them, we get them qualified. It's a condition of their probation that they get their CDL within that six months.
Okay, I'm just bringing that up, because of course, we did have a light winter this year. And depending on how next year is going to be, we, we don't know that. But the fact of the matter is, if we have individuals in there that lack the CDL and don't get it till towards the end of the year, and haven't had the opportunity to do the runs for snow plowing, Towards the end of the year and haven't had the opportunity to do the runs for snow plowing. I think we're indeed due. And, and, you know, I think that's why. We have to be critical as to how lean we leave our departments, especially you or. Mary Ann and Public Works. I think Public Works is probably the one that I'm very concerned about. With regards to that. I also understand that the starting wage may be an issue as well. So I, you know, I keep thinking of that on a daily basis. I'm trying to think about constituents, whatever reaction that I take. And I know everybody in the city does the same thing. But anyways, thank you. I appreciate that explanation.
Thank you. City Administrator Dotay, a lot of conversations happened. Anything you'd like to add?
Well, you know, I. Haven't heard a full consensus, I guess, yet. I'll just comment on the. You know, the offer to reach out to Auburn. Certainly heard a few of you. I'm, I'm, I think that's a. A viable option and worth exploring, and I'm happy to do it if that is a consensus of the council. So I think that 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 makes some sense. You know, I, I do. You know, I appreciate the conversation. I'm, I'm, I'm happy to hear. Some of the shift around the finance position. I do think that is a critical position. And in hindsight, you know, after the last, that that certainly was a concern. So I do appreciate the willingness to revisit that. And I think overall, I guess, you know, we're certainly prepared. Again, I think everyone's had a chance to chime in fully, so I don't want to, I guess, lead anyone, but in terms of the direction you're sitting in, kind of hearing. That and allowing us to work back, we're prepared to do that and 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 put that that, you know, budget together. I think the the parameters you're giving are manageable. For us to 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 bring something back. That that's workable. You know, I, I think just the only other thing I'd say is, is, and I, and I do appreciate the recognition. You know, around, you know, these positions, there's just a lot of needs, you know, throughout the city. A credible amount. You know, these positions are in there. Staff, every department is struggling in in some aspects with workloads and that and. You know, it's, it's when you're juggling that with a, with a reduced staff, you know, things. It just makes it more challenging for us to, I guess, be progressive or take initiative when that, you know, with those types of things. One particular position that I do, you know, just say that, you know, it is lower on the list. But as I said to you, you know, you know, initially, this is challenged when you have twenty-two positions, you can't, not all can be number one. So they may all feel like they should be number one, but you can't do it. But the fire inspector position, you know, I know it was passed on to all of you from, you know, from there. And I think there was some good points in there around the needs of our housing and the need for safe housing. And I just want to comment that, you know, I think, you know, that's something we should just think about in terms of if the inspector's not going to be supported this year. You know, for that, I think we we should have some serious conversations at the city around housing and the safety. Aspects of that, and if the inspector's not going to be there, then, you know, how do, how do we go about that? And 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 really kind of, you know, looking at those areas. That was a recommendation. It did come out of our rental registration. After significant discussion, and I think there was an identified need. So. And I'm not, you know, necessarily lobbying for that, that position. I just wanted to raise that point that. All of them are important. All of them are, and there are some, some real safety needs in that particular one that I I do understand, and I appreciated the comments that came from. You know, our department there. So anyway, that's, I think that's best I can give now.
Yeah, and I do want to acknowledge that was a pretty good email that was sent to us. By, I think, is it Captain Kai? Yeah, I couldn't remember if he was lieutenant or captain. I apologize.
Real quick, I just want to remind everybody, based upon the votes. The inspector's position is still in the budget.
Okay, good.
It was a frozen position that was added back as unfrozen. And we had five votes on Tuesday, so that is still in, still in the running.
Okay, good. And then I just a quick reminder that if we did choose to provide us an amount and let Dennis kind of work the budget, that doesn't mean it's done for us. We can still go in there and tweak that. And and really look at our, you know, our, our goals and stuff, so I just want to share that. Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Want to thank the director there for keeping me straight. I thought that I was thinking correctly, and she verified that. I may need a note from her to my wife so that she'll believe that I actually did remember something. I want to go back to last year's budget. What was the initial increase we were looking at last year? I, I know she's got that right on the tip of her tongue. She'll have it within three cents, I'm sure, and probably within about three seconds. But I, I want to come up with with some comparisons here because I get these, these questions all the time. The tax rate, as I understand it currently, is twenty-eight sixty-seven per thousand. Does that sound right?
Sorry, I had to get some documents together. So just to kind of walk you through. F Y twenty. Kind of before COVID really.
Right, the initial budget that we were presented.
Right, F Y twenty. This was the actual F Y twenty. We were at twenty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents. Last year are actually the current year budget, the city administrator's recommendation. And the school superintendent's recommendation put us at thirty dollars and sixty-six cents. We reduce that down to the twenty-eight sixty-seven.
Okay, and when we started out this year, we were looking. At the two presented budgets from the school department and the administrator. What was the total on those?
Hang on, just. That I think I have over here. I thought it would be easier having all this space and it's not.
Trouble is, you have more space, you put more stuff in it.
Yeah, we begin the budget process at thirty dollars and ninety-three cents.
Thirty ninety-three was what we started at, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's all I need. I thank you, and once again, you've proven yourself to be a veritable human computer. I don't know how you do it.
All right, thank you, Counselor Khalid.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I saw that email for like the fire inspector, and I do support that position. I hope I did vote for it. But if I didn't put my vote in there. But I'm not going to say much tonight. But I think like a dollar increase for me is. Doable and reasonable. You know, we do understand the financial and economic. Impact of COVID, but some reductions and to services and programs is just completely unavoidable. So and another thing I would like to bring up is the D I position. The D I position, many of you may not. Understand, and I hope, you know, you all take the time to really like do your research and try to understand why this position is needed. But personally, for me, I see it as rooting out in equities in in systems that's very much needed in in our community. And splitting, splitting it with Auburn is a disservice. Or voting against is a disservice to our community members, and I hope we really reconsider and really rethink. You know, not supporting this position. If we don't support it, unfortunately. I don't see myself voting for the budget.
Counselor Ray.
Thank you. I'm going to continue down Counselor Clement's line of thinking, I think. So what I. See is that we now stand at a one dollar and seventy-two cent increase. Initially, we were looking at two twenty-six. But the school committee took off forty-five cents, and from what I think happened on Tuesday night. It would be about nine cents, and so. So we're still seventy-two cents off of that one dollar goal. That's, that's being batted around a little bit, and so. As I try to reconcile that in my brain, it just seems like too far of a leap for me, and so I'd. I'd be interested if folks would consider something more like one dollar and twenty cents. And again, like, the school department is using so much COVID relief funding to try to tackle and bring their tax rate side down, and so. It feels. Like. If we could just do that, you know, like, I wish we had more answers, but I know that's not on any of our staff. Um, it would be a lot easier of a discussion. I will say. I do want to revisit the senior principal clerk and putting that back in as well as the equipment operator. I think I already said that. Sorry, there's a lot of math on my pages here. But I, I think just not to put Director Hunter and the city administrator in like too much of a squeeze, like I, I'm willing to go above the one dollar. Because I think a lot of that is going to come down to our side of things rather than school. So even if we go. Twenty-five cents back on the school side from where we are right now. You know, that still only gets us to. Oh, gosh, I didn't do that math. A little closer to like one forty. As an increase, and so then we're going to have to absorb the other forty cent decrease. So. I'm just trying to play around with the numbers, and I work much better with that than theoretical, so thanks for listening me to, as I do math.
All right, so I'm not sure any real clear direction has come out of the discussion so far, so.
Mr. Mayor, I am comfortable at least. Kind of absorbing everything that's been said and putting together maybe a roadmap. And. That may refine. Where you're leading to. And then that way, it may be a little bit more concrete to have something in front of you. To either say, yes, I agree with, no, I don't, I want to change this to. You know, a six-month start date, you know, those types of things, if that makes sense to you.
Yeah, and I think, so the message last week was clear, you know, rec's important to us. I think the fire inspector position, it was clear that's important to us. And I'm sure, I mean, I'm convinced the the three of you will keep that in mind as you work through the process. All right, Counselor, so what does the council think about that? Give Heather, Dennis, and Dale time. To kind of play with what we shared over the past two meetings, including this one. Thumbs up? No, yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, is there, is it possible just to run through some? Of the odd items that were on the parking lot list, just to see where they stand? I'm comfortable shifting capital around because that won't impact the tax rate.
Okay.
But those other parking lot items would.
Yeah, no, that's fine. But first, I really just want to really get a feel for the entire council feels about that. So maybe raise our hands if you support that, and we, I'm going to lower your hand so that we can count that, but. Because I'm not sure. I think I saw a couple of councils that didn't appear they'd be supportive of that, so I just want to know. So Heather's suggestion, if you're supportive of that, raise your hand.
Are we looking at, so I'm clear on this, Mr. Mayor. We're, we're asking the administrator. To come back with a roadmap at a dollar. Increase the tax rate for a dollar total. Is that, is that what we're? Coming through for now, or?
No, I don't think so, but Heather, what, what did you? What were you thinking when you said maybe that?
It will do my best, and then we can, it may be within. Twenty cents or so, but, you know, we, we can get it as close as you can, and then you can tell us what. You can refine it down to that, from that point. How's that?
Close as you can to where? What number were you thinking?
Through the forty to sixty cent range for the city.
All right, so do we have hands raised for people who are supportive of that? So I see. All right, I see six. Okay, yeah, I see six hands.
Mayor, can I just, just quickly, if folks could just leave their hands up, something we learned with our last straw poll. Was that when we broadcast this out, so the public right now can actually not see the hands. So I just want to identify what we came up with as a solution that, just to stay, Counselor Joy, Counselor Pen Gill, Counselor Lee. Counselor Khalid, Counselor Jensen, and Counselor Ray all have their hands raised, just so the public knows that that's how they're voting. Because we didn't learn it until we broadcast and realized that nobody could see it, so.
And I'm supportive of of that as well. Not that my kind of vote counts, but I just want to say. Uh, okay, so Counselor Clement, you have a question?
No, I guess my hand is still up, but I think your vote does count tonight because there's an absent counselor, so.
Well, not that, not that we're, not that we're voting tonight, let's just.
You might, you might as well join us and run right onto the bus with the rest of us.
And as mayor, I've decided that I vote when there's a tie in the real meetings. Because I think the responsibility of the council is to make the, you know, decision. But so. So your hand is not raised, so I'm going to lower it. Counselor Clement, Counselor.
I'm having difficulty with buttons here tonight. I don't know why.
Yeah, Counselor Lejoy.
Sometimes two buttons aren't helpful at all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In my previous suggestion, and I believe the city administrator mentioned that. If he had some direction from the council, he would pursue. The, trying to find. Talk to Auburn with regards as to that position. But is that something that we want to give him this evening? By a show of hands, is that the way to do it, Dennis?
A straw poll probably would be helpful. I mean, I don't think we've heard from everyone just yet. So it'd just be helpful for me if there's at least a consensus there to move forward with that, and certainly. I do hear Counselor Khalid's concerns and everyone's concerns and comments around that, so I think. What I would say is, any discussion we have, it would just be coming back and presenting a little bit more detail about how that might, might be able to work. And so just for, I guess, for everyone to be able to consider that as, as you debate or deliberate over that position in general, so.
All right, so again, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just think it's important that we should at least follow through. To get that pertinent information, and then, you know, we can work it out from there.
Okay, so can, can counselors, again. Raise your hand if you're supportive of at least, you know, having a discussion with Auburn, and then it'll be brought back to us. And then we'll give the city administrator a moment to identify who supports that.
Mr. Mayor, can I make one comment before we vote?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so I just want to be very clear with my intentions here. I am hearing from some folks that they are not necessarily supportive on this council. I want this position at least started is why I would be willing to look at the other configurations is where I'm coming from on that. Similar to Counselor Khalid, I, I wish we could go whole hog and start and get it done, but I also realized too. This is incredibly specialized work, and I don't know how many municipalities we could model that off of. I'm guessing Portland has a position like this, but I don't want to be Portland also, so I think we want to put our own spin on that work. And so in order to give time, I think the the six months is okay, is why I'm advocating for that, and then. Beyond that, if the only way we can do it is splitting with Auburn, there's like my priorities within a priority, I guess.
Oh, yeah, I appreciate the compromise because I think that's how we get through tough budgets. All right, so I have four hands raised. Counselor Dotay, if you could just run through that. I'm sorry, city administrator Dotay.
I was going to let it go, but I. And so we have Counselor Ray, Counselor Clement, Counselor Petten Gill. All with their hands, and Counselor Joy all with their hands raised, so. We will do that. We'll have a conversation with Auburn, put some framework to that about if there's any interest there, and we'll present it back to you at the the next meeting.
All right, good, thank you. And with that, unless any counselors have any further comments, we'll shift it over to Finance Director Hunter to go through the parking lot.
Certainly. Want to make sure there's no other one. Okay. So, well, kind of set aside all capital for now, because like I said, that's either through the bond. Or through fund balance. So we can, and it won't impact the goal of trying to. Address the tax rate, so we can look at that later. The other items that would impact the tax rate going through there is the extended solid waste hours. That's a two-hour extension. That's a two hour extension for a value of $11,590. And I assume the hands that are coming up are ones that are in favor of that. So we have Counselor Pettingill, Counselor Ray and Counselor Jensen. So that's three in favor of that. So that will not be added back in.
Hold on, hold on a sec. Council of Joy, where were you at? Um, you raised your hand for a second. And then we got Counselor Jensen joining, I think.
I'm afraid I was a bad student. I wasn't paying attention. I was writing something down on my paper.
Okay. But now we have more.
Yeah. Are we talking about eliminating that two hour extension? Is that what we're talking about?
Okay. It would be adding to the budget. It is currently not in the budget.
All right.
So we now have four votes.
Yeah.
Of four.
Okay.
So this is a, so you're in. Okay. So, uh, yeah, this is almost kind of confusing because now it's difficult to tell who might have a question. So Counselor Jensen, are you supporting that or do you have a question?
Supporting it, but also we're missing a counselor. So I'm not sure if we should have a threshold of four. Cause she might join in and on the, those of us three.
Oh, good point. Uh.
I can, anybody that's on the fence, I can kind of add it back in for one more round. When we talk about it for next Tuesday, how's that? Does that work?
I did have a question.
Okay. So we use, but were you supportive of the two hours or not?
I'm supportive, but I, yeah, I had a question as well.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so I know you, Mr. Mayor, was supportive of this. Um, since becoming a homeowner, these hours have driven me insane. Um, because I am not a morning person. So seven AM, why would I be there at that time? And also I do my housework on the weekends and if I'm going to go, it's going to be, um, Monday morning or I am going to wait until Saturday morning. Um, and so I do wonder if there might be an ability to shift hours instead. I mean, could we look at usage data? Um, I know it's not just homeowners who use it. It's landlords and other folks who have bigger capacities. But I think if we could have some uses, usage data to guide this decision, maybe it could be budget neutral.
So I could, if I could just, y'all quickly just respond. And I think, um, we can look at that. Um, I, I expect there'd be, be some, some, um, likely some union, um, you know, challenges with that that we may need to, um, work through. But let me, let us first review it. And then I think we can come back with, um, since this is actually coming forward with, looks like enough votes to at least carry it forward. Um, we'll come back and we can share that update at the next meeting.
Okay. So if everybody who doesn't have, whoever doesn't have a question, if you could lower your hands. Okay. Good. Thank you. All right. Uh, Finance Director Hunter.
So the next item, um, was the decorative trash can receptacles. That is an item that was replacing some of the damaged receptacles down in the downtown tree street area. That is an item that would be eligible for fund balance. So if it is, um, a general consensus, I'll add that to it. And then when we review the capital items, if that's not something the council wants to do, we can remove it at that point. The open gym does not have a value to it, but it was put on the parking lot. My suggestion would be in, in talking to, um, the Public Works Director, with the open gym, that was something available prior to COVID. And they do have building monitors that are funded through the general fund that that, um, program may be able to be, um, opened back up again once the CDC guidelines change and so forth. So I'm thinking at this point, um, it's going to be budget neutral. And I would suggest maybe, um, after COVID, um, some of the restrictions are released. Potentially, um, looking at what activities and recreation programs, including this, will be opened up if that's okay with the council.
Okay. I don't see any objections.
So, um, there is, um, the Beehive Data Warehouse that was placed on there. That is for the utility funding only, both that and the, um, census customer portal with analytics, both of those items. They're halfway down the page if you're following that packet. Our utility funds only, that wouldn't impact the water rate increase. Is there still a desire to incorporate those into the budget? Or do we want to defer that potentially for a year?
And we're going to, we're going to have an evening that we discuss utilities directly, right? Or is that, is that not accurate?
Um, we can, at this point, um, actually I can set aside some time for next week, if you would like to do that.
So I personally think we really should look closely at our utilities, uh, because, because of the significant increase, but that's just my thoughts.
Okay.
I see some nodding, so I don't think it hurts just to plan on that.
Okay. So I will plan on that for next Thursday then. Um, the police chief had offered, um, or requested two different promotions. One patrol to detective and then detective to sergeant, I believe. Um, the combination of those two promotions was $23,773. I don't know if that's something, I know that will help morale, um, in the police department. With his turnover, that may be possibly able to be a budget neutral item. Because some of your senior patrol officers obviously are retiring and, and turning over that we may be able to absorb that directly through salary savings.
I, I'll just, I'll remind the council, I think that was brought up by the chief when we were discussing the crime patterns and, and he felt that by doing this, he would be able to have a position in the selective forces. Is that what that unit's called again?
Yes, I, I believe the chief's in the audience. If you would like to bring him in, he may be better able to answer that directly.
Yeah, I think that's probably a good idea. I'm sure he'll be brief.
Hello.
Hey, Chief.
Okay. Yeah, that would be in the selective enforcement team. Um, because right now, um, we don't have anybody that oversees that team. They basically have to come back, um, down the street from the station. I mean, I really would say this is a incentive for my offices, my detectives. Because we're having such a mass exodus from the police department. Um, this kind of is a thank you for what you're doing. And just because of our increase of calls, we had over 50,000 calls this past year. Um, we need these positions. It's not adding a new body. And it wouldn't actually take place until, um, I've got some of the cadets out of the academy. I just sent three in March. I've hired another five since I think the last time we all spoke. We should be going to the academy in August. Um, I've got some interviews lined up. So I would be looking to make these promotions probably in, uh, the late winter, early spring of, of next year, once we had the bodies out of the academy. So I think the effect would be even less and it would be a good show to these officers and detectives that I still have working here.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Any questions of the chief before he goes? Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm hearing what, uh, what you're saying, Chief. I guess we're looking at, uh, at least winter. I, I don't know what, what our number's at today. It's up, down, up, down, up, down. But I would like to see before we make any changes in the hierarchy, I certainly want to see more positions filled. You know, I, I, I just, I don't see making the promotions if we don't have the bodies.
And I have no intention of doing that, Counselor Clement, until I have the positions because I'm not going to be taking anyone else out of patrol due to my low numbers right now. But the good sign is that I have hired people, um, and there is an end to this. My hope is because the academy has started back up.
I certainly hope that is the case.
We need, all right. So I saw lots of nods in support of this. Is there any objections to this? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah. And thank you for bringing that up again, because I think this was a wise decision by the council.
So, um, the next item was providing LA arts additional funding, um, to provide music for the various art walks. I did send the council an email from the LA arts chairperson, um, what they would use that money for and the value of that. I'm, I would just defer to council and ask if that's something that they would want to incorporate into the budget for this fiscal year.
Could, could we do that out of fund balance where it's not going to, we're not sure if it'll be an every year thing?
As long as it does not become an every year thing.
Right. If it does, then we could put it, put it in the regular budget. For this year though, do you think we could do a test run of it?
What I would think I would like to call it, just to be clear, is a COVID opening for the art walks in celebration. Or something to that effect that it kind of alludes to that.
And we're going to, and we truly will need some help this year, getting some people downtown and enjoying our, uh, our city. So, uh, I would like to have further discussion. I know they're talking smart vein part, but I really would like to see on art walk, you walk down Lisbon Street, you walk past at least two bands, you know, acoustic or whatever, but, uh, the atmosphere with hopefully some new lighting that we have been thinking about. Could really make a difference for that art walk and get families down there. Uh, Counselor Wright?
I just wanted to fully support that. I appreciate the director coming up with some quick thinking, uh, language to allow us to do that because we're not going to see the trek downtown this summer. And I think that was a huge boon for us and people kept coming back. Um, and I know some conferences at, at the college are canceled. So I, I think giving people a reason to come downtown and visit, um, that street would be really important this summer.
Okay, great. Thank you. And so overall, it looked like most counselors were supportive of this. If there's some objections to that, please let us know. Okay.
So the next item is the $5,000 in equity and diversity training. What I would recommend at this point, um, in the current fiscal year, we had citywide training budget, but obviously with COVID, we have not been able to, um, utilize those funds. What I would recommend doing at least for this year, um, is to encumber those funds and carry and use those for that particular purpose next year. Um, that way we are not increasing the budget, but the training still is completed if that works for the city council.
Counselors, is everybody okay with that? Okay. Seeing overall support unless somebody has an objection.
Okay. Um, the next three items were on new program and service lists that could be funded through fund balance. So if there's a general consensus to add them, um, I will present the council, uh, updated fund balance listing. That would be easier to kind of see, but that includes the assessing deed reading program, the assessing aerial imagery and the code enforcement aerial photography. That's for scanning and storage.
And you're, you're thinking that can be the fund balance?
I'm thinking all three of those would be eligible for fund balance. Because that's the addition, uh, the initial year. And then it would be just, um, incremental maintenance and licensing after that.
All right. So can I, can I see what counselors think about that? I don't, I don't want to keep assuming. Okay. Anyone against it? Or have a question about it? Counselor Jensen?
Yeah. Well, there are a few things lumped together in that. Um.
There were three different items on your list and I lumped them together because they're all eligible for fund balance. So there is the assessing deed reading program that automates that whole process of deeds from the registry. And once we get our new software, will it able to be uploaded right into the software versus manual rekeying? We have the assessing aerial imagery that allows them to, it's just what it sounds. It's putting, um, aerial imagery on parcels and buildings and so forth into the software. And then the code enforcement is the aerial photography, um, that includes scanning and storage. Um, and I know, um, Mr. Hediger is in the audience as well. If, if there's more of a description that is needed with that particular project.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'd be curious to hear more about that project. And then how, how, I guess it would be used. Um, yeah.
Okay. Can we bring in Director Hediger? And if we have video, just if department heads could make sure they turn it on.
Said he was coming. Let me try again.
No, he's here.
Just got him.
Yeah.
Here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And actually I, I'm going to look for some clarification on Heather on this one, just to make sure I'm talking two things. Cause we've made two requests with respect to aerial photos. Heather, is this part of the other 12, five that we talked about?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Perfect. So this is, um, scanning of historical, um, aerial photos that we have. I believe we have three different sets from the seventies, eighties and nineties. Um, we retune, we tune routinely use these photos, um, on the GIS. Um, on the internal GIS right now, we have several different years worth of historical photos on there that staff uses for various reasons. And this would kind of fill a gap in there. They're likely to be used not just by our department, but the assessors department and public works. Um, we got quotes. Honestly, I've probably put this request in. This is probably the third time I've put this request in. And yeah, that's, that's what we would be doing with that information.
Can you give an example of why, why a department would need to look at that historical?
Sure. I mean, part of it is, um, looking at it from an enforcement perspective to see what development patterns have been in an area. Um, we can see, you know, whether or not the more recent photos, for example, right now we have 2018 photos. And then I think we go back to 2013, 1997, then 1961. Um, when we're doing different, um, investigations as far as, you know, how a neighborhood has been developed, we'll look at those photos and see the changes that have occurred over time. We may get questions about whether or not a structure was legally put there. Now granted, that would be more, um, helpful with more recent photos, right? A night photo from 1980 isn't going to necessarily help, but it gives us that historical context as to how the community.
All right. Thank you. Uh, any other questions of Director Hediger?
Before he leaves, um, Mr. Mayor, if we could jump down, there was a, uh, item placed for code enforcement efforts of a $50,000 reduction.
So let's, let's get the council to show support for these three items.
Okay.
Uh, are counselors in general supportive of that? And that's through the fund balance reminder? Or, or does anyone have questions, further questions? Okay. If, if no further questions, I need to see the C thumbs or something, or a wave to me with a smile. A real smile, Luke. Okay. So again, let's keep our hands up for a second so we can make sure we have a consensus. Okay. I see a consensus there. All right. All right. Sorry about that. Thank you.
It's okay. I just didn't want him moved out of the, the screen yet. Um, there was an, uh, parking lot item placed on the list for, uh, reducing the code enforcement efforts by $50,000. And looking at that and talking to the director, there really isn't the functionality to do that unless we are looking at layoffs.
Counselor Johnson?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was the one that had that added. The, the idea behind that was that if, um, like, I would like to think the fire inspector position, if another department can take on some of those responsibilities that code would be, you know, required to do, um, then to me it would make sense to have that money. You know, it's being used for this to put it in another department. So I was hoping to have this kind of conversation, and it's exact conversation of how is that 50 grand going to impact the apartment? Would they be able to absorb that by giving some of their duties off to another department? If that's not the case, then I'll withdraw that from the parking lot. But I just, you know, want to have a bigger conversation about some of the issues downtown.
All right, thank you. Director Hediger, would you like to respond?
So I'm, I think this goes in part to the comments you folks were making earlier about the fire inspector and rental registration. You know, we certainly do, our tasks are similar but different as far as what fire inspections do and the code officers do. Fire inspections, I mean, at this point, they're looking at really life safety matters, and, and that's incredibly important. And they're more proactive and the intent through rental registration and that additional inspector is to be more proactive as well. Whereas code enforcement historically has been the heavy in the situation, quite frankly. We come in behind them when there isn't the compliance maybe that is, is sought. Not that the fire department can't do that, but they will often look to us and bring other matters to our attention. So we can, you know, potentially take more aggressive action. Rental registration was somewhat structured in that sense where the inspectors, the engine companies, they would be more proactive and we would come in behind them. We work very closely every day with the fire inspectors, so there is some duplication there as far as us going out to job sites and looking. But we, they do enforce a different set of codes. The fire codes NFPA 101, NFPA 1, we're enforcing the building code, plumbing code, property maintenance code. So you know, could we get up to speed and learn theirs? Could they learn ours as well, potentially? But I'm not sure that, you know, given what we're trying to do, I think, I think what the council's direction is with rental registration and trying to be more proactive with a structured inspection protocol, which I think is another discussion we'll end up having with the council at some point. I'm not sure that you want to share those duties necessarily, or I, I guess I would say you're going to need additional staff in order to do that well and do it appropriately.
Any, anything else, Counselor Jensen? Okay, thank you. Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could question the administrator, how soon before we're going to have the workshop issue on River Street and what's going on down there? Because I would be in favor of if we could deferring this until we have that sit down, knock around and see if we come up with some type of consensus thereafter as to how to handle this, this reduction or keeping it in the budget. Is that doable, do you think? Thank you.
Well, I, so I'll answer the first part of the question. I we, I would expect we're having a meeting, internal meeting, to do a bit of brainstorming around the structure of that workshop so we can structure that appropriately for the conversation. And I would expect that it, it could be as early as next week if we can really just, you know, commit to the time after a budget workshop, really. So I mean, and we could put it even next, as soon as probably next Thursday if we wanted to, after the, again, after the budget discussion and put that on there. The only I, I would just support, I think, what, what Director Hediger has said, and I think the concern, I really hear Counselor Jensen, and I, and I appreciate the explanation, understand where he was thinking with this. I would be, I, I would just express my concern over any reduction in that department at this point, you know, of this nature, like this. We, we have, I think, is you know, as I said earlier, just about the fire inspector piece and the importance. There was some good points in that email today that I, I just emphasized that, you know, we are going through you know, with the pandemic, there's additional challenges that I think that we're all dealing, where we haven't, I guess, fully realized is maybe the way to put it with our, with our housing stock and and I think what we're, what we could be facing from a safety standpoint. And I want to make sure, you know, from a housing safety standpoint anyway, and I think having our code enforcement, you know, fully staffed and fully you know, funded as, as presented keeps us on the right track. And I think adding the fire inspector, as you've already talked about, really just helps us overall in, in improving that area, actually, as, as Director Hediger said, they're more proactive. And that really did come out of lengthy discussions on the rental registration and review there. And they, that was why it was added, was to enhance and improve. You know, what we're, what we're currently doing with inspection. So so I, that's my only caution is I wouldn't tie it, I, I would, I would not suggest tying it, I guess, to the River Street or Little Little Canada, you know, area neighborhood discussion and addressing that. And I would just say that we certainly can have it, but I just wouldn't tie the two together, I guess, at this point in, and recommend against the reduction for the needs, just because some of these needs are unknown as well, as we come out of the pandemic and as we continue to move forward. I want to make sure we're fully staffed to respond to those needs.
Okay, I can appreciate that. I'll, I'll defer to Counselor Jensen. It was his request. What I have done in the interim, though, having researched our ordinances, having looked at ordinances from my former city, if we need to come up with something to give these people some teeth so they can do something other than write letters, then I want to do it. This writing letters and giving somebody 30 days. I go back to a situation years ago, a building inspector, we called him back then, approached me, it was a safety issue on the police department. I was in charge of the division that handled those. We went out, we looked, a guy had a chimney that was about to fall into the sidewalk, and there's a school bus stop directly below. He says, well, I'm gonna write him a letter. I said, well, what if he doesn't comply? Well, I'm gonna write him a letter, give him 30 days to take care of the situation. What happens if he doesn't? Then I write another letter and I give him 45 days to take care of it. So I, I, we need to stop this stuff. We need to enforce. The word enforcement to me means you gotta do something. We say you gotta do. And not just write a bunch of letters and let stuff pile up to the point where we get complaints like we've been getting of late. That, to me, is an embarrassment to the city. And if we need to do something as a council to give code enforcement those tools to work with, then if we do it, I expect they're going to use those tools and bring about some results. And I thank you.
Thank you. Hey, no mixed messages here, Dave. You have a mayor tells you to be nice.
It's like you're.
I'm trying to be as nice as possible, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I can really, really go down and dirty if you'd like.
I'm sorry.
Whenever we have that workshop, Counsel Clement, that would be a great opportunity to, to share with you and the council the tools that we do have and the challenges that we have administering some of those, because we do have some teeth. But as the mayor indicated, sometimes we're, we're told we need to bite softer.
Okay, good discussion, though. I appreciate.
I've always been told you get more with a kind word and a gun than just a kind word alone, so.
And that's why we don't have guns.
Is that, is that it for Director Hediger? Heather? All right, you're muted, but all right. So thank you very much, Dave. Appreciate you coming into the meeting.
Yes, thank you, David. So we just have a couple more items. The next one is the loan underwriting training. This was an economic development tool, particularly getting training not only on commercial underwriting, but also kind of developing a better understanding of the the, the tax credit, the historical tax credits. I'm thinking that we may be able to fund this through one of our special revenue fund loan pool accounts in order to get that, that aligns directly with what those special revenue funds are looking at. The purpose that they serve, rather than having a general fund impact on this particular line item. If the council's okay with that.
Okay, so not in the direct budget, council is okay with that? I'm seeing some nodding, enough nodding, nothing. Okay, thank you.
The next item was a new program and service for $225 for an economic development marketing plan implementation to look at targeting a specific industry and courting them and so forth. After looking at this and recognizing that this may or may not be successful and have a long-term implication, I think calling this a pilot program and using fund balance for this initiative would be appropriate. And then once we see how it goes, if it's an item that we wish to continue, we could look at other funding when that need arises.
That makes sense to me, and I see some nods. And that's for targeted marketing to, like, some of the goals that the council brought up at the retreat.
Exactly.
And Counselor Jensen has some pretty good ideas about our place, and so I would encourage some further discussion with the council. Counselor Wright?
I can't get the Zoom hand to go up right now, but can you just be a little bit more specific about how, what, how, sorry, how we're spending a quarter of a million dollars in one year? What is that? Is that for consulting, like, costs or?
Consulting, the reach out and just marketing tools that we may have the validity to apply elsewhere and in other industries as well. That's more of a placeholder of value. I think it was just kind of sticking the toe in the water just to see how we would go about it, which is why I think it's eligible for fund balance to do it as a pilot initiative. It may be appropriate once everybody's ducks are in a row to maybe workshop this on exactly how we're going to do that, because I don't think that piece is clear, and I'm getting the thumbs up from the city administrator. So I think it, it gives you that opportunity to, to have the pilot program and then actually look at executing it and then agreeing to the execution and then seeing what the results would be.
Okay, so it would cover the cost of labor, but it's not ongoing. We're not hiring someone into that role, especially.
No, this is a one and done type thing and then.
Okay, I was like, it sounds people heavy and yet fun balance. So thank you for clarifying that.
The next item that was put on the list included $5,000 to redesign the new city logo.
All right, we see one thumbs up. Any other thumbs on that? Mike, you're just trying to be nice. All right, any other, Counselor Jensen, anything you'd like to say about that or just accept the?
No, I guess it's serious to me, so I don't want to joke about it.
No, not yet. Yeah, I apologize if you thought I was joking, but I wasn't sure if Mike was. All right, so anyway. All right, I'm not seeing support for that.
There was an item for translation efforts, but it wasn't really necessarily quantified. I think what I would suggest is once we go through the equity and diversity training, and once the position is looked at, then perhaps we can, they would be able to be able to put together a budget of exactly what's needed. And then roll that before council and at that point, see if there is funding surpluses and other accounts that we perhaps could transfer monies into it once we know what is needed where.
Counselor Wright?
I was the person who asked for this, so I just want to ask, we, since we're in an election year, as new councillors come on, if that can be part of the orientation. I looked back at my 2018 binder, which was a real blast for the past, and that info wasn't in there at all. So I think just having that as part of the onboarding would even be a, a good first step, too. But I, I love the plan that Director Hunter just laid out, too.
In general, is the council okay with that? Couple, three. Counselor Jensen, conflictly, do you okay with that? Okay. Okay. All right, it looks like overall you have support for that.
Okay, so the last item on the list was the addition of several of the cash donation requests from other area groups that we have not traditionally funded. They include $5,000 to $10,000 for Jump Start. We had a community health counseling for $425. The children's center for $500 and light flight for $2,000.
And I just, uh, Mike Dostie reached out to me about the description of, of the money being sent. He, he wanted me to share with the council that any money that, that the city provides would be, so if somebody goes in the Hartley block, the money won't be needed. It's more for if they find two or three businesses that, that meet the threshold to be able to provide assistance so that, you know, it's, it's more businesses being able to to take advantage of that. So it's not about the Hartley, or if it's a business that that couldn't use the Hartley, it's more about having more bang for the dollar. And he said absolutely that the money would not be used if, like, if somebody went to the Hartley and they didn't need it. It's not, they're not going to spend, they're only going to spend it if they see the need. And I would just refer everybody to the workshop packet if they, you know, want to refresh their memory on that. Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I initially had some concerns. I was going to support it at the $10,000 mark. I still support it at that mark just for trusting the downtown Lewiston Association alone. I have talked to Michael Dostie and a couple other people. I'm actually very comfortable with the program now. So, I mean, any reservations, I guess I had before, go, you know, going forward, they're completely assaged, so I'd support the 10,000 mark.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of that list, the only thing I would support would be the Jump Start program. And I would support that at the 10,000 if, if that seems to be the consensus of, of everybody. But the other stuff, this is not the year for it. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wright?
Can you just one more time run through what was on the list? I was not, I was clicking around, so trying to find it now.
Certainly. It was Jump Start. It was the community health counseling for $425. The children's center for $500 and life flight for $2,000.
Right. And in response to that, thank you for bringing me up to speed again. I am in favor of three of them, the first three.
Well, if you don't mind, why don't we go through them one at a time? So we give that a fair shake. So, and so you can continue, Alicia, but if you're okay with that.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're talking about Jump Start now, then?
Yeah, let's, well, yes, let's start with Jump Start and then we'll work through one at a time.
Fully in support at the 10K level.
Okay, thank you. Heather, can, yeah, so people good with Jump Start at the, Alicia, did you say supportive at the 10,000 level? Okay. Anyone else supportive at the 10,000 level? Okay, we have a majority there, almost. All right.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, one of the thought processes I had, so it doesn't impact the next year's budget and because it is a pilot program, I had carried forward the Liberty Festival money from a year ago, just in case they needed a little extra this year. So I would recommend using that money that was carried forward and not impacting the FY22 budget.
What's that? What's that dollar amount?
That is $10,000.
Okay, perfect. All right, so there was overall support for that.
The next group is the community health counseling at $425.
Anyone supportive of this very small amount to help children? We have.
A question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
The question here would be, these are outfits that we've never funded in the past. Is that correct? Did I hear that correct, Director Hunter?
That's correct.
Okay, I only saw a couple of hands raised there. Okay, so there's not overwhelming support for that. Next.
The next one is the children's center for $500.
Anyone interested in this very small amount for children? Okay, now we have four on that one, so there's some support there. Four fives.
And then the last one was life flight for $2,000.
Can, can you help us understand why that's for a future purchase or to support? that's for a future purchase or to support the purchase they've already done?
Wrote their letter kind of blending both. Um, one was to provide some COVID relief, the other one is to um use the money towards um uh an equipment or transportation room capital replacement.
Okay, thank you. Any support for that? Okay, not seeing any there.
Okay. And we're done.
All right. This is a good discussion tonight. We actually went through quite a few important things.
Mr. Mayor, I think what I would like to do is um kind of map out next week because we, at this point, we are still scheduled to approve the budget on May fourth. So next Tuesday, which is before the council meeting, so we can at least start the discussion, and if it goes longer, continue it Thursday, I would like to review the um general fund budget adjustments at that point. Um, and and kind of give you an update of where the tax rate would fall, and what we're doing with some of the positions that we've been kind of bobbing and weaving on. And then Thursday, go through the fund balance items now that we've added um some other items to there to make sure that everybody is still comfortable with the fund balance usage and what it's being used for, and then probably in tandem, look at the um LCIP projects as well. Um, I've gone through, I'm waiting for a a couple pieces back from some department heads, but on what the surplus fund availability would be, that would help reduce some of those LCIP um bond requests.
Okay.
And then we would also um rediscover the water sewer and stormwater funds at that point in time as well. If that works for the city council and the mayor, that's kind of what I'm proposing.
All right, and that's for Tuesday with the meeting night. We're gonna be
That was Thursday.
Okay, good, thank you. Yeah, I think that sounds good, and I'm not seeing any objections. Uh, Council Ray?
Thank you. Um, this is a question that I've just been trying to figure out from what's already been presented to us. I figure I might as well ask, um, while we've got the experts on the line, um. In the the section of the proposed budget, when we talk about use of fund balance, it talks about, you know, the the eight and twelve percent, but it never gives a full number for how much is in our fund balance. Is that something that's easily accessible and report audible, reportable? It's probably
Yes, it was part of the presentation, the administrator's presentation, so I can send those two slides to you.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Council Pat Gil, do you have something?
I did, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, so I just said I wanted to uh take a moment um and acknowledge the tremendous amount of work and dedication. Um, the cities, uh, the employees of the City of Lewiston put in each and every day. Um, and I wanted to offer a sincere apology. It brought to my attention that some things have been transpiring over the past year that have led to an increasingly and incredibly hostile work environment. Time and time again, when I've talked about this, it comes back to the council. And while I can take some small satisfaction in knowing that neither of my words nor my actions have contributed to these poor working conditions that currently exist, I must assume some responsibility um that I I've not done more um to en- uh to ensure a better environment. That deeply saddens me. Tonight, I'm announcing I'm not seeking reelection this fall. It's a decision I've been agonizing over since last October. I'm hopeful that the next person for Ward Two will continue to take the middle road and put Lewiston first. Never been one to speak simply to hear my own voice, and it's bittersweet. But I have so much love for the city, and I still have much on my list uh that I set out to accomplish, but it's time for me to pass that torch on to someone else. Focus on myself and my family. Got a mountain of books to catch up on, got a banjo that I really need to learn how to play, um, and quite frankly, take a moment and catch my breath. Um, and in full transparency, this toxicity has migrated to the council as well, and more than a couple of times, I've really struggled with my why and why I'm here doing this. Um, so to finish this up, I just wanted to say thank you for the experience, and it's been an honor to serve my constituents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other uh questions or comments from the council? All right, seeing none, we'll uh see you all Tuesday.